I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please join me for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could I have a motion for approval of the minutes from June 22nd's remote meeting? Oh, sorry. Roll call.
Jay Brady? Jay Horcino?
Present.
Jay Murphy? Greg Odell?
Yeah.
H. Randall?
Yeah.
Adrian Bergen Udo?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Usually we have that on the agenda. So, can I have a motion for approval of the minutes from the June 22nd board meeting?
Moved.
Moved by Kristen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Herb. Any questions, comments, corrections? Ready to vote? All those in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous? The manifesto is going around. It was also approved, I believe, online via email. Public input? No public input? I do have three adjustments to the agenda. We'll be adding three action items. Action number nine is to accept the following retirement: Kyle McBean, part-time custodian, White Mountain Regional High School, effective September 11th, 2020. Action item number 10: Effective immediately, any persons entering district buildings shall wear a mask or suitable face covering, including contractors or any member of the public. Action Agenda: Adjustment to the Agenda Item Number 11: To approve a budget freeze with contingencies allowing for essential purchases for reopening with prior approval from the Superintendent of Schools. No, I'm sorry about that. You can just cross that. They all are, usually. Superintendent's report.
I wanted to start with the last item, and that's the budget update from fiscal year 1920. And I don't know if those of you who have not met Kristen Frankel, which is our new director of finance, who plays with Sheila, and Sheila and Kristen are going to do a report on the budget and also a little bit around the transition.
Welcome, Kristen.
Sorry about that. So, this is not final yet. We're still working on closing out the books. I guess to start, I'll say that when I gave my retirement notice, I said that I would close out the books for the last fiscal year. And it made sense to me for me to do that and for the replacement Chris to come in and take off with the new year, the 2021 school year. So, we're still working on closing out the books. And it will be done sometime soon, but I just want to give you an update. The last one we did was near the end of March, right after the whole COVID thing started. We have a higher projected surplus, which I think we kind of expected because we didn't end up with sports and those types of things. So, our projected fund balance is $445,293. And $290,997 of that comes from the budget side, and $154,077 comes from the revenue side. And if we're close to this, or if it's in the ballpark, we will be funding Article 5, the capital reserve funds. We'll be funding Article 5, the special ed out of district placements fully at $25,000. We'll be funding Article 6, the truck for $10,000. Article 7, the Buildings and Grounds Maintenance Sustainable Trust Fund for $300,000. And $71,705 of that $445,000 is the carryover POs that are flowing into next year. So, that's also part of that $445,000. And then whatever's left after that, we'll fund Article 8, the district-wide road maintenance and paving account.
I'm sorry, Sheila. Can you tell me the amount again on Article 6, the truck?
$10,000.
Thank you.
Sheila, can you also talk about that other $800,000?
Yeah, yeah. So, just to give a little overview of how much will be going into the Building Maintenance Trust Fund. So, the $300,000 should go in from the surplus itself. We're also putting the $856,130 from Article or Article 11, and that was the additional adequacy that state is giving out this one time. So, that is $1.156 million going just from those two items. And so, that will bring that balance up around $1.7 million in the Building Maintenance Trust Fund. So, that will be very helpful future projects. So, I don't know if anyone has any more questions. Like I said, this is not cast in stone yet. We're still tying out many things and balancing everything out for the reporting that's due September 1st. There's just a lot of ends to pull together, so.
Looks like we're all set?
And how's the transition going?
We should, I don't think Kristen's met everyone.
Right. If everybody wanted to introduce themselves. I did meet Kristen. Welcome. Board members. And we have one vacancy in Whitefield for the board currently, as well as Jim Murphy isn't here tonight. He represents Carol.
So, I'll just say, it's a little crazy at the central office right now with we have a lot of new people in training for the new positions. And on top of that, having two of us, two of us there that are like, do I go to you for that? Or do I go to her for that? So, it's a little crazy right now.
We also hired somebody named Christine.
Yeah.
No, I go by Chris usually.
It's been going really nice.
Yeah. We're going over things we need to go over. Chris comes to me with questions. We're just working together, and it's going very well. And a lot of the new staff so far is going very, they're going very well, doing a great job so far.
Everybody handled the flood with grace? Including the one person we said, "Don't start this Monday, start the next Monday."
And Kristen, Chris? You've come from seven boards to manage, I understand.
Last two and a half years, I've been at SAU 35. So, that's what I'm off the list to plan to help the boards. I'm that executive board publisher for both classes.
Thank you. Okay. The next is Jake with the STEAM update.
This year for our STEAM program, due to lower enrollment than expected for students, we couldn't justify our four and a half full FTEs to run the full program. So, this year, it'll be kind of scaled back as we reengineer to up the enrollment and see what it looks like. So, this year, the STEAM program, the kids will get a science credit and technology elective. They'll take their math and community assistance outside of the program. But it's hopefully just a one-year thing. We really want to continue having a STEAM program here at high school. So, we're just going to work on, you know, retooling, looking what we can do with our FTE around the building and getting kids involved in the upcoming school year 2021. Questions about that?
I have some questions.
Yeah.
So, I mean, first off, I just want to say I'm personally affected by this. So, I just want to preface this with, you know, my son is in the STEAM program. So, we were kind of surprised when we got this letter in the mail. And so, one of my questions would be, you know, we have this program that essentially was, it was the high school for these kids. I mean, they spent most of their day in this building with the same teachers working with them. So, that now is scaled back to just one class, right?
One block every day.
One block every day, so one class. And so, one of the problems is how do you unwind these students from that program? Because this was a four-year commitment, really, that us parents and students, we bought into this idea. Now it's gone. And so, I think the idea, I mean, it's a question, but do you really think, having pulled this away from the kids this year and having these kids transition to the regular program, will you get any of those kids to return? What's the likelihood that having had it taken away, they would actually trust us, you know, to commit again?
I'll answer that in two ways. First and foremost, a lot of the classes that they'll see that aren't STEAM are still designed the same way. We've made a shift of inquiry-based learning across all of our classes for the past five years. So, a lot of that approach that they saw in STEAM will continue in a humanities class or a math class. And secondly, STEAM isn't going away. You know, we're not pulling that away. We're not pulling the program. Our enrollment was lower than expected, and we could not justify taking four and a half full-time teachers all day for the number of kids that we had. So, this year, it's about redesigning, looking towards the future, and giving the kids that are still in the program what they've come to expect over the last two years that they've been for two years, or what is that another thing? So, it's about preserving what we've done over the past five years in the STEAM program because they've done some incredible work, celebrating what they've done, making sure that the education the students receive in the humanities and math classrooms is similar to what they would have experienced there, and then getting ready for what the future of the program looks like being.
I guess one of the problems really is when you have kids that are in the middle of their academic career here that have been in this program for the last two years, three years. We're talking about some juniors, some seniors, some sophomores. It's really tricky to unwind these children from a four-year horizon with the curriculum. And then suddenly say to them, okay, so I'm going to restate this a little bit. In the STEAM program, you're working with all of these competencies, but they're spread out over a four-year timeframe. So, we're talking math. We're talking, you know, humanities stuff. So, a child, you know, a student in the program, they may know part of Algebra 1, part of Algebra 2, part of geometry. But until they've gone through the whole program, it's really tough to then track them back into the math curriculum, right? So, I'll just give you, you know, a personal example. My son's going to be in Algebra 2. But he's already taken, you know, that's going to be a review for him in some cases. Meanwhile, he was in, you know, he's done some geometry, but the way things fall as a junior, you know, he's probably not going to have geometry, right? Even though he's gotten credit for STEAM, Math 1, 2. So, it's one of the problems that I don't know that was really, you know, I don't know if it's really been addressed adequately. But thinking through like, okay, we have this cohort of kids, and how do we get them back into the mainstream curriculum, knowing that there's going to be gaps just because they were now pulled out of this four-year program?
I actually think this is the perfect year because there's going to be gaps across the board because of blood marks through June, this summer, and the fall. And again, I definitely understand your concerns. But I do want to reiterate that the shift that we've made at the high school in the past five years, and really the past two years, the focus that we have, this culture of teaching, culture of learning, it's not going to be that much different, except for that they're not going to be in the same classroom with the same four teachers all day. It's going to expand them to some other incredible educators throughout the building. It's going to expand them to students that they may not have seen in two years throughout the building. So, I definitely do understand the concerns about, you know, how it fits in and where the gaps are going to be. But I do think, you know, if, you know, I'll park and back to one of our co-valedictorians' speech of graduation, that there's positives that we can take away from this experience we're now in. This is a good time to transition for us to retool because the gap will be seen throughout the building, and we can work in the fall to close all those gaps for all of our students, not just those kids that are being shifted from the program. Or, again, a holding pattern of one year so we can develop and refocus what that looks like, where we can balance the FTEs.
I mean, they're good points. I appreciate it.
But no, and Herb, I definitely understand, and, you know, I've seen George's work in STEAM for two and a half years. So, I definitely understand, but, you know, we're doing what we can to make the transition smooth, to support all of the kids as we come back, and to retool what STEAM looks like. Because it's definitely a part of what we do.
I think the last question I would have would be around the communication piece of this. So, have you seen the letter that was sent? So, we got this letter, and, you know, again, because, you know, my son and his friends that were in the program, they were really heartbroken by this. And like reading the letter that we got, it didn't seem to me like there was much in the way of like personal concern or empathy or understanding that, you know, for these kids, this was a big, this is a big thing. There was nothing addressing how we transitioned these kids, allaying concerns, you know, and nothing personal as far as, you know, there was a lot of generic, like general information about how your schedule could be impacted. But there's nothing personalized for that student. So, it said, for example, "You'll be enrolled in a traditional math course, and recommendations have been made by your STEAM teacher." But nothing saying what that was, you know? So, we had to, again, we had meetings on the phone with the guidance counselor and the STEAM teacher to try and work through that. But we're always talking about communication here on the board. And, I mean, I don't want to single this out. It's, you know, it's one of many types of things I've seen like this where we're addressing things that are not positive news. But it's not so much communication, it's messaging. And I know Chris and I have talked about this a lot on the board. I would just, you know, respectfully submit that, you know, things like this, we need to think through more and like try and allay those concerns and show that empathy from the very beginning to contain those types of things and help us deal with those types of news. Not every news is good, and we can't always communicate happy stuff. And I appreciate that we've done, you know, what we could here.
I would just like to step in just there for a moment in that the high school has always, and all of the buildings regarding programming or changes in programming. Maybe it's the time that we're in that this didn't happen, but the board has always been informed before that decision was made to say, "Well, you know, physical science," or, you know, "changing a program specifically in that." So, and I would imagine it's because of the enrollment and the way we're living for the past, you know, four or five months that that didn't happen. It is the typical course that we see as board members. It'll be presented. We don't have the enrollment. This is why we're changing it, and then it gets changed. Here, it didn't happen. That's basically the gist of this, right?
Julie noted on day 26 of me being interim principal, thank you for the feedback. I will keep that under advisement for next time. But again, you know, I wrote the letter, you know, that was a letter that I wrote. I ran it by our counseling department. The lead STEAM teacher saw it before I sent it out. I shared it with Aaron before I sent it out. You know, and that was, I didn't have anything to do with scheduling or that sort of thing. So, we put out the information, you know, during a pandemic where we weren't in the building, and I was in charge, but not in charge. So, definitely, I appreciate the feedback. Communication is something.
And ultimately, that is kind of the point. You wouldn't be here tonight if we didn't have a board member who had a child that was in the STEAM program, and the board members and the public wouldn't even know STEAM was doing this.
Communication is something that has to be focused on moving forward, so.
And we're all appreciative. This is the first time that I can recall that something like this has really happened.
Well, it's unusual times.
Yes.
Yeah.
And it's excusable for sure.
Yeah, I mean, sure.
But it's unusual times when people are under more stress than they've been in in the last 100 years. Something particularly important is that the amazingly good intense and hard work of the folks who work for the districts are communicated along with the details that they're trying to communicate. And I think, you know, as Herb said, we've talked about this a number of times, and I don't want to beat it to death, but we do a lot of really amazing innovative things in these districts, and we forget to communicate the incredible compassion and integrity and excellence behind the actions. We talk about it so much internally that by the time it's time to communicate it externally, we're used to the message. And we believe in it wholeheartedly, and we know we're doing good things. But that doesn't get caught by the public at large. And at the end of the day, it's really a disservice to the people who are working so hard in the district because folks are left in a vacuum, and they create their own narrative to fill the vacuum instead of accepting the narrative you have to offer. Point both taken. We are working hard on it, all of us, not just Jay.
You know, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, you and Mike with Gear Up and, now, don't go anywhere. And Link Crew?
I'll speak to Link Crew. You know, they obviously, you know, with the pandemic and everything, Link Crew is a very hands-on, you know, two-day training over the summer for kids, 12 hours in person, and then a full day, very hands-on. They have changed their entire curriculum to be remote training over the summer and then a digital orientation where we can film things ahead of time. The Link Crew leaders still check in, so Gear Up funded the money for the online curriculum. So, we're still moving forward with our Link Crew. We have, you know, applications for our leaders. We'll be working the next couple of weeks to set up their training before we come back to school. And, you know, things are flexible now for when we roll out that actual orientation. Since it is not live, we don't have to be steadfast to, you know, that date that we have set on the calendar. We're flexible. We have, you know, things change when we have our first actual day of school. So, that's still, the program is still going to proceed as planned. We're just more flexible in what it looks like and how we roll it out.
Just to piggyback, I believe Gear Up and Link Crew are, I think the backstory is last year, we had Link Crew and it kind of was a conflict with the master scheduling sense because we had the ninth grade here one day, and as Mr. Hess said, that's different, so it's going to be virtual. And just so they understand, also that we did Gear Up 4 with our Gear Up federal grant. This year, our cohorts are going to be juniors and sophomores. So, you can kind of see Gear Up money and how we're implementing it to programming and making our students' lives, you know, that enrichment piece, which is big. We certainly had some really, really cool stuff happening with our summer camps that were Gear Up-related with our junior cohort. We're going to start to really try to transition them to what's their next steps. And using some of those program funds, we can give $15,000 a year to put into our kids at White Mountain, which is great. And with our 11th graders, they're that much closer to getting that $7,500 scholarship if they attend an in-state school after college if they're in the Gear Up cohort, which is $20,000 each all year. Anybody that went to like being a speaker in those classes. Just programming-wise, you know, we were going to use some of the Gear Up money for AMC ninth grade orientation in the fall, which is still up in the air. But that, we've been doing that for over a decade. And then we secured like a really renowned national motivational speaker named John Lee, who was going to come September 11th. With his client Everest, his client always, you know, the mountains that require him. It's kind of tied his curriculum into, you know, you can achieve anything. And I've seen him live once, and for about 14 days, I was really over him. You know, that's the kind of guy you leave, and you're like, oh, my God. I'm going to change my life. I'm not going to have another car. I'm going to start jogging. You know, that kind of thing for about a month. So, I just think in a perfect world, if we were, you know, if we were able to go in person or do, maybe, and things are still fluid, maybe our Gear Up kids can come in the 11th as a cohort to listen to him because he's still willing to come. And he's really, he's really expensive because, you know, to get those type of national speakers here is not cheap. I think that's something, I was hoping that we would kind of be back to normal, and our kids would kind of be, you know, kind of like, and that would have been the first thing, the first thing they would have gotten, and that would have been a great way to kick off the year. So, that's kind of where we're at, where he still wants to come. And Gear Up Hampshire is paying the bill, which is amazing, and they're not even taking it off of our, they found additional money because they think it's very important to have him come. And we're partnering with Berlin High School, so he's going to be here in the morning and come to us in the afternoon. So, kind of having the two schools collaborate, it is a cool thing, too. So, that's kind of what's happening with Gear Up.
So, I have some clarifying questions. Later in this, later in a few minutes, we're going to be talking about our calendar. That's the start date the kids would use September 11th. Does that mean that just your Gear Up kids will come September 11th? Or everybody, or however our reopening is? Just clarify that.
And I wanted to clarify, too, if you don't mind. Are the ninth graders coming on September 2nd? Is that still the plan for Link?
No, because the Link Crew orientation is no longer in.
Have they been notified?
No, because we haven't set a date.
We have to get approved today.
Right, we haven't set a date, so I didn't.
So, part of our, we'll do another adjustment to the agenda to remove the ninth graders starting on the 2nd in person.
Good. Thank you. Because we didn't want that snafu that happened last year that we didn't have that all right with our calendar. That's great.
And pre-COVID, we started negotiating with John Lee prior to going to enrollment and thinking how we're going to start in September. So, Dr. N. State, the goal was to prove we're going to have everybody, staff, and all our kids. So, it was a 60-minute, he's got a PowerPoint which he syncs, you know, like his PowerPoint's going as he talks. I mean, it's real clear. I mean, that's what he, that's his way of contributing, but he's really good. So, Plan B would just have the Gear Up kids who, you know, the money is for them and is, you know, sponsoring them spaced out appropriately.
And could you livestream that so other kids could watch it? And in the event, we had to extend the calendar even further, which will be a discussion tonight. Is there Plan C?
Uh, not, no.
Okay.
But, because I haven't been told to throw Plan C.
Okay.
Um, but if, if we don't start the 11th, Plan C could be the parents drop off the Gear Up cohort and pick them up, or we try to push back the date. And it's really depending on what Berlin's going to do. So Berlin kind of can't go the 11th. That's going to affect us. We're going to do Joe Two Bridge one start.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before I do the reopening updates, I just want to go through a few things on my report first. Um, because the district leadership team is all going to report out on their domain and their status and where, where they're at. But I want, we have some new employees that we just hired and that Christine Roy, she's our HR payroll person, who's replacing Trina. Gabby Stevens is a total one teacher at Whitefield. And Tina Wright is a school counseling CTE secretary at the high school. I've written down the central office configuration so you know who does what. It gets a little confusing at times. Yeah, a couple to me too. We had a nice office meeting today, which was great. I think that's something Christine's going to be doing. The July 8th flood update.
Can I ask you something?
Yes.
Do we have, um, Stephanie Gliddon is assistant to you and Shelley?
Yeah.
Does, no, she's on there, but I wondered if there was a replacement for her for Mr. Hess's administrative assistant?
Kathy Scott, who was the counseling admin.
Did we talk about that at all?
No, we just switched.
I was just curious.
She, she moved up to Stephanie's.
She was already an employee of the district.
And we hired Tina Wright to take Kathy Scott's place. Okay? It's, um, kind of a philosophy is to share the leadership and.
Yeah, absolutely, yep.
So, um, we lost quite a few days of production in the office. It was a pretty bad disaster. I did send some videos to you guys so that you could see it. Um, so it is clean now, and we can work in it. We did lose, um, some things. I don't remember the last quote about how much, how much money we lost of computers and furniture. I don't know if we've actually put that together yet. But CrimeX has.
I know the list, but I haven't attached it to ours.
Okay, so we're still working on that because the cleaning, um, was taken care of by our landlord's insurance. However, our personal belongings has to come from CrimeX.
May I ask a question on this? Sorry. With that incident, like on your report, you have, you know, the central office staff or most of the central office staff lost three days of productivity with the assumption that I'm sure we paid for their days that they weren't in the office.
They were in cleaning.
Is they're in, or if they weren't there, is part of the claim for wages lost for those employees that we paid that couldn't be in the office? Does that make sense?
I brought that out. I didn't bring that up.
But I think everybody was there. We just were not productive. If they weren't doing what they were doing.
Right.
You should, you should, I run rate that on your claim and then let the insurance company get it out. But we've been similar kinds of claims in, in my tire employers before, and it's been covered because it's not working.
They should be paying their daily wages, not us.
When we met with the landlord, the CEOs of the landlords, I did bring that up.
Okay, okay, good, thank you. It was less about those three employees losing their productivity or more about the district losing its work part?
No, it was three days, not necessarily three employees.
Three days of the law.
Of the law.
In my report to you, I actually listed the names of people on our task force so that you could see who was on our task force and which, um, domain they are working in. And it's quite impressive. We have a great group of people. And the DLT members are the leaders on each one. We do, we did add our Dr. Ford as a steering, uh, member, John Ross, our town health officer as a steering member, and Stephanie Cameron, who's the REA, MEA rep as a steering committee member. So.
Are the, are these committees for the task force, are they meeting virtually or are they meeting in the building?
They have been meeting virtually except for this morning. And Rob and Bill will probably report out when it's their turn for the domain.
Okay.
They did walk through the building this morning.
Okay, right.
Gym too, yeah.
It just seems like if we're headed towards having people in the building, that we'd probably send a good message to be in meeting.
So then our decision-making process is that the domain committees will be making recommendations to the steering committee, which is the DLT and those other individuals that I just, um, said. Also Ben, um, Gacy Olson is also on the steering committee. And then we will bring our recommendations to you, to the board. Um, I put the timeline in. I don't know if you have any questions there. It's very ambitious. Then I'm going to ask the DLT now to, no, I'm going to talk about survey first. Survey numbers have changed.
I might have a whole. Busy tonight, right? Get it all in there. First of all, I want to say probably an understatement to say that the efforts and support of the steering committee and the task force committee are so appreciated by all of us on the board. Hundred percent. As far as the timeline, tomorrow night is a listening, listening session. I'm curious, I guess, if board members, now, is that virtual? Yes, okay, so. Can all board members listen in or would that constitute a meeting if there's more than four of us there?
I think you can listen in. You're not, you're not holding board business. If you all of a sudden say, why vote this?
If there's a quorum, it's technically a meeting, but.
I, no, I, I think that.
It's a fine line on that one, I think.
I would say, I do want to, if, if you're not holding board business, so. I would say, um, probably, I don't want to limit your interactions with taxpayers, but if nobody, none of you asked any questions, then you're not holding board business.
And actually, the focus.
No more of you.
Or take any action. Tomorrow night's really, people are going to be giving their input and their feedback. Um, each domain leader is going to, um, talk about the goal and, and their guiding beliefs of their domain. And then people, it's going to be separated that way. So we're going to talk about communications first, and we'll get input about that so we can keep it structured in some way. And then we'll work our ways down through each domain. So, and it's all going to be in the chat. People are going to be talking all over the place. It's going to be a ton of people. And it, it's managed quite well that way.
So it's six o'clock for like community parents? And then seven?
For staff.
For staff. Can we sit in on that one as well?
The staff one? I, I don't see why not.
I don't know if that was sent.
You'll hear the staff.
Was it? Okay.
Yeah. So, um, so the numbers that I gave you on the report have changed a little bit over the weekend for the survey results. And I'll tell you how they changed. The staff survey, which was one question, um, there's now 185 responses. And the question was, with the New Hampshire guidelines for school reopening in place, how comfortable are you in returning to in-school instruction and supports? Um, 55% have said they're somewhat comfortable. 21%, 28% they are comfortable. That's 52 responses. And 16.8% not comfortable at all. And that was 31. And, and the 102 responses for somewhat comfortable, they pretty much said, we need to see the plan first and then we'll let you know if we're comfortable or not for that. With the family survey, there was 856 responses. And the question is, if in-person learning resumes in the fall, do you intend to send your child? 501 parents said, which is 58%, yes. Uncertain was 314 parents, which is 36.7%. And no was 41 parents at 4.8%. And then the other question was, if in-person learning or some type of hybrid learning takes place in the fall, how do you intend to get your child to school? Or how do you intend for your child to get to school? Um, 41%, which is 351 responses, said they will drive their children. 418 of 48% said they will use district provided transportation. 59 kids will drive themselves, 6.9%. And 26 families will carpool, 3%. So it looks like half of the district will use transportation, pool buses.
Aaron, I have a question. This is actually maybe for Jake, but, uh, do we have enough parking spaces here for my school to handle like an influx, like a, an increase of kids wanting to drive?
Yes, Jake?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I'm sure Rob could tell me if we all have that in our spots to have. But yes, we could handle all of them.
So there's a, okay.
That, that number is actually twelve.
I was going to ask, what is that average?
About, about 100 parking per month a year.
Do you, do you ever have to limit it because you don't have enough space or?
I've been here, this is my fifth year, and we've never had to limit.
Okay, all right. I was just curious. Great.
So, um, we're going to, this is an action agenda item, but, um, I want to discuss it right now for a minute. Is, um, the commissioner has given permission from schools to add three additional days for preparation for reopening. And those three days will be part of the 180 days, similar to the five days that they gave us in the middle of the year to pivot into remote. I did talk to the DLT and the association, and yes, they do want the three days. And they may want more depending on our planners. So we may be coming back to ask for additional, but for right now, we did, we, they do want the few days. And I asked the commissioner for that in writing because it's completely fine if it's anywhere else. So I, I copied this letter in here on my report. And that's that. So I think we're going to have updates now from the domain leads. What, a clarification of the work your domain committee is doing, and then like next steps, if you can. Um, the communications that Jake and Mike Cronin.
Evening folks. Good to see everybody in three dimensions for a change rather than two, so. Uh, Jake and I, as well as, uh, I'm going to say about 10 other stakeholders representing, uh, school staff as well as community folks are working on, uh, the development of a, uh, communication structure in protocol. And then, uh, this is going to be specific, or it's going to be used specifically as we gear back up to get kids educated here in the fall, how we're going to communicate through that process with the community. But what we've also come to discover is that it's going to be, uh, used as probably our standard operating procedures for communication as we move forward in the future here as well. Uh, so we have spent the past week, uh, examining all of the communication avenues, platforms, pathways that are available to us, both our most traditional, uh, mail and, and newspaper as well as, uh, our most innovative these days. And we're kind of dissecting each one of them in terms of speed at which communication can be delivered to the community, stakeholders that are going to use it most often, uh, who on staff has access to the, uh, the usability, uh, the delivery, the programming and, uh, the deployment of those. And then also creating a, uh, a sequence of folks that have the ability to deploy those messages via those different avenues to make sure that we've got some redundancy, some multiple levels to make sure that things get out. Uh, we're talking about classifying messages, uh, at different levels. Things that are most urgent down to things that are most routine. And depending upon the urgency of those messages and the degree to which they might have an impact on a typical school day, uh, who needs to review those messages prior to deployment? Whose hands and desks do they have to go across to get checked before they are given to the person who's actually going to send them up to the community? Uh, we're also in the process of, uh, reviewing a number of sample, uh, communications that could be used on a moment's notice, customizing them to our district first off, leaving some areas to customize for specific messaging, but having those pieces in place so that we are not, uh, writing things out in a moment and having some things in our back pocket ready to go. There would be flexibility with that. Uh, but interestingly enough, this is something that the Hampshire Homeland Security and our emergency operations procedures have recommended that we do for the incident. So, um, we are not talking about content of messages. Uh, that's been something that's been challenging for the, uh, the group to work with. Everybody wants to talk about what their thoughts are for what a reopening should look like. But the charge of this committee is clear, and it's just creating a structure and a protocol for how that content will get out. Uh, and so after we kind of worked through reminding everybody, what do we get, and to talk about, what do we get to create, uh, the group was able to buckle down by this week, and, uh, we've got a pretty good draft going right now. So, any questions that any of you folks have? Would Jake anything you'd like to add at this point? If you agree with your domain, I appreciate that, sir.
So previously, um, immediate thoughts that come to my mind are, okay, it's a snow day. We get an all call, we get emails, we get this. Those going to continue at this point right now?
Those will be worked into kind of the standard operating procedure. Those are the most frequent kinds of urgent communications. Uh, if a, uh, a bus run has to change, buses have to be locked, those kind of things have gone out as well. Uh, so those would all be worked in. But some of the things that are facing us in the spring as well as that will be facing us in the fall, uh, we want to have a few things prepared, uh, just in case so that in the heat of the moment, we're not having to try and create, uh, those communications. We've thought about them ahead of time. We customize them, very specific details before they go out. And then there is a protocol for who reviews them and who gives the final okay, how it goes, and by which methods. Some of those communications are, are urgent that phone, voice, uh, excuse me, phone, social media and, uh, and website are the most immediate ways to get them to folks. Some other things like putting them in the newspaper, uh, those aren't going to be urgent messages. But, uh, it's outlining those as new folks come into the district in the future. If the protocol is in place, reinventing the wheel every time an emergency happens.
And I, and we did spend a little bit of time talking about with COVID and what different plans and adjusting and are we back? And, and different plans around the state have come out. They have dates where they set where we will update families on this day about what two weeks from now look like. And having a protocol in place to have consistency and we make sure that message gets to everyone in a timely manner, that's one of the things we talked about and look at what the protocol looks like as well.
Once that plan is finalized and accepted, then this committee will make a recommendation as to what that timeline of communication would be and what methodologies would be used during that process.
Thank you. And I did get a little peek at it today, and it looks really good. Very confident.
Lots of credit to Beth Chase and Eileen and, and Jen Pedro. They're doing a lot of the, I'm going to say the grunt work. Jake and I take a look, and the outside stakeholders are looking at, uh, will be recommending, you know, might be waiting today or this week, uh, as a whole subcommittee, uh, before we pass it along to the steering committee.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
So, uh, Rob and Bill, facilities and physical plant.
Do you want us to throw any numbers out?
You may throw numbers out. I think it's a good idea.
So we were primarily tasked with just taking a look at the facilities from, from a, a safety standpoint. Obviously, it's easy to sit in a classroom and make recommendations, how a teacher needs to set up a room if we're coming back. But we're not making judgments on instruction and how to deliver it. We are just making recommendations based upon how people need to move in and out of the building, what type of maintenance concerns do we have, what type of cleaning and sanitation concerns we have. So on the original task force day, uh, we broke out into our small group, looked at some guiding questions, and then really laid out some of the research that our, our members really needed to take a look at. And, uh, we met today, uh, beginning at 7:00 AM. And in, in our group, we went from Whitefield Elementary here to the regional, and then finished up at Lancaster Elementary to, to get it, look at the, these spaces. We've all been in these spaces, but we've never really taken a look at them through the lens of COVID. So, uh, we, we did that.[1785.24] So we did that. I did meet with one of our parent board members last week, who couldn't be there today. So I walked him through with the building principals and the lead custodians last week, so that he could, you know, give some feedback. So our next task is on Thursday, we're gonna reconvene as a subgroup. We've asked people to take a look at what the research says and some of the best practices that are out there right now. And then we are gonna formulate our recommendations to the entire task force, reviewing that information. But some info that you need to kind of be aware of is the potential financial implications that could be coming our way in order to meet some of the recommended air quality pieces, as well as responsible social distancing in our classrooms. So about ten years ago, our school district, we moved more to collaborative-based education, and education as a whole now. So those old-fashioned desks with chairs attached to them, and then the student desk down in Lancaster and Whitefield that kids could put their stuff in, we slowly shifted those out and replaced them with tables that are either four or five feet long. So we now no longer have the capacity that's socially distanced with those tables. So there is a potential expense of buying desks that allow students to be socially distanced, or buying plexiglass dividers so that we can drop from the six feet down to the three-foot separation. It's gonna be good luck finding plexiglass on a market right now.
I have a question.
Yep.
So I know that the New Hampshire guidance says three to six feet.
Yep.
And you just said three feet. Is that, is that some guidance with plexiglass?
So like when we looked at the Hanover research with the plexiglass and base mass, they're recommending three feet.
You could do three feet.
Yeah.
With those parameters.
But that's with where it comes.
That's with plexiglass and the plexiglass as part of your protection.
Because I think that buying desks in this district is a deal.
We're gonna use them for a year or two, you know, and then we're gonna go back.
Right.
So in Whitefield, Mr. Cronin mocked up a classroom. And there is inequity in classroom sizes, building to building to building. So in Whitefield, the average classroom size is three hundred and fifty square feet. In Lancaster, it's about seven hundred and fifty square feet, and here it's about six hundred square feet. So when you go to Whitefield and you mock up, you take every bookcase, even the teacher desk out of that space, and you put in just student single desk, you can fit eight to keep that six-foot barrier. He's got a kindergarten class, two of them?
Yeah, two kindergarten classes of twenty, at this point, ready to range.
So, you know, those are areas of concern for us. We also looked at the recommended air quality controls that the NEA is gonna push for, as well as the CDC. At Lancaster School, they do have the rooftop units that can blow the air adequately throughout the day. But they have to run twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. They've never been tested that way, they've been used to running the past twenty years. You know, when the system calls, where the CO2 detectors senses enough carbon dioxide in the air, they kick on and flush the building.
And then what we also do is we use unoccupied during the evenings. So when the place isn't running, we shut them down, we reduce the electrical cost, and we don't need it. And then we start them up in the morning at five o'clock or six o'clock, all the levels come down, and it's really a cost-saving, as you will find out.
Now, here is, just for the potential for electricity for this coming school year. So I was talking to my dad, if you don't know my dad, he's the lead custodian at Lancaster Elementary. They have twenty rooftop units. He, five years ago, accidentally left one bang on for a month. And the reason why they knew that they were on for a month is the electricity in that building went up three thousand bucks. So now you take that and multiply it by five, you're looking at fifteen thousand dollars in unanticipated electrical costs. And that was five years ago.
In one month.
Yep.
In one school.
In one school and one month. So if you're talking ten months, three schools, and this is up to, obviously, we need to get more precise once we make recommendations from the facilities, but you're looking at a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar unanticipated cost to keep these systems going. Now, here at the high school, the average of our motors aren't adequate. And then once you put in the MRF, what's the MRF rate?
Fifteens or sixteens, they're recommending now. We run about sixes and eights, defend them on the area, and now they're taking it up.
So the system's gonna have to push harder to get the air through these filters to filter the air. I mean, you can already hear this one. So, you know, we are concerned about, as a facilities group, what is gonna happen to the bearings in these and the shafts. Whitefield, Gary discovered five of their rooftop units, the motors are gone.
Yep.
So he's currently working on getting those repaired.
Even if they're repaired, the CFM out of that may not be enough to be able to turn the room over five to six times per hour. That's the recommendation. With, you know, with a decent filter on it can help out with this. So very significant as far as the environment that we're gonna put these kids in right now.
So in addition to the air system, in the winter months, you are gonna be sucking heat out of your buildings through this flushing system.
Yep.
So then there's the potential that you are going to have to increase your fuel usage. We calculated basically, you know, double the oil pellets and propane that you use. The pellets and propane here and heating oil at the elementary schools. Obviously, we'd have to look deeper at the numbers and work the Siemens to calculate what that potential heat loss is gonna look like. But it has a potential of being upwards of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars in increased costs in just the fuel supply for the buildings. Then you start asking the question, we're asking double of these burners, we're asking double of the oil or the pellet burner and the propane. Now you probably end up having to maintain those more often. So there's an increased cost in the fuel filters that we put on them, and how often we have to clean the pellet boiler and so forth. So there are some unanticipated expenses there.
Just to break in on that, this building, as far as the pellet boiler and the gas-fired boiler, the gas-fired boiler was put in not to take care of the whole building by itself. It was never designed that way. So if the pellet boiler goes down, we may not have enough with bringing all that fresh air in enough to actually heat the building. Now, we won't freeze the building, but will we make it comfortable enough to everybody doesn't have to wear a coat? That's yet to be determined. But you are gonna have to bring a significant amount of fresh air into these buildings.
And then finally, talking to the lead custodians, the amount of sanitation that's gonna have to happen during the day, and the amount of intense cleaning and disinfecting at night, they are probably gonna ask for the potential of an additional custodian during the day to keep up with keeping bathrooms clean, keeping hand sanitizer stock, giving, you know, materials to the classroom teachers. And we may have to ask, you know, for a little help there. If we were to put one additional person in each building, just, and again, this is a potential expense. On average, you're looking at a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars total for three people with three benefit packages. So when you start adding these costs up, and these are just quick, like here are the big things we're thinking of, here are one point one million dollars of unbudgeted money. So, you know, the facilities group wanted to take a look at that aspect and, you know, what the financial implications are. We do know that we have to do a little bit more study here at the high school and at Whitefield as far as our rooftop units and what they can actually, if they can keep up with the CDC. We know Lancaster can't, but there's gonna be an expense associated with it. The other piece is Lancaster and Whitefield's healthcare center do not meet the state-recommended location if you have a suspected COVID case in your building. So Mike's already kind of taking a look at relocating this healthcare center so that it has an exterior egress. In the event that you suspect a COVID case, you can isolate and get them to the outside quickly. Scott was preliminary, talking about potential ideas today. But again, that's gonna be a recommendation coming from this committee is looking at those two healthcare centers in the elementary schools and ensuring that they're in compliance with, you know, with the recommendations.
So Rob, can I ask a question?
Yep.
You're talking about recommendations and regulations and
Yep.
When you look at the ventilation systems, recommendations in the New Hampshire guidelines, it's all should, there's no shall, there's no
Mandates.
There's no mandate there that says we have to do it. So have you had that discussion, like?
Yes.
With anybody?
Yeah, we've had that, but actually, I meet with the facilities directors throughout the state through Amy Clark. And we have a Friday one, they get in this Friday, and they're all struggling with the same thing. I have a train Zoom meeting tomorrow, we're training air conditioning people to talk about that. But we're going back on the CDC and the rest of them recommendations, and that's five to six air exchanges. And all the facilities directors in the state are running after this number right now. So I don't think the state has said, you gotta do five to six. I think it's implied through the CDC, if you're gonna have that environment, you're gonna have to provide this. So I've got facilities directors all over the place worried about this one. Tomorrow I'll get more information.
And I would guess that the state did not specifically cite that, because then they would have to help fund it if it aided in part of that. So that, you know, we'll make some recommendations from the facilities group, that'll go to the task force, and that task force will decide how to handle that issue.
And, you know, one of our guiding beliefs, which we're still inciting a little bit, is we have to do what's feasible for our community.
Yeah.
And so.
Yeah.
I'll pass to Mr. Murphy, because Jim was one of our participants in the tours and got a chance to talk through some of the stuff. So do you have anything to add, Jim? Welcome your comments.
Folks, generally, I was staggered by the potential expense we're looking at. Just far more than I ever could imagine. It's scary.
I have another question. Is that, those recommendations that you're just saying, is that for full capacity of kids? If you had half the amount of kids in the school?
I would have to evaluate that.
Me too.
But you're moving air, air is constant, right? We're not moving carbon dioxide, we're moving allergens out. So, you know, my assumption, and we'll verify this, is that we're gonna have to move that air, regardless if you have three kids in a room or a bit more.
Right, and I think the recommendation is if you're in-person instruction and the kids are in the building, it doesn't matter if it's fifty percent of them or a hundred percent of them, you need it.
You need to move it. Now, we do have, you know, there are some spaces here that lend itself better than others.
Right.
Our gymnasium has set up the whole air a lot better than, you know, our science rooms that don't have adequate ventilation in them, nor do they have windows. In the fall months, we do have the potential of using fans, you know, opening a window and sucking fresh air in and another fan on the other side of the room, pushing the old air out and circulating it that way. But that only works until October.
The other portion is that, and there was discussion with the facilities directors, a lot of them are using HEPA filters with those blowers in the classroom. And then somebody said, well, which student are you gonna put next to that? Because it's sucking all that stuff that's supposed to be filtering right by that student.
Right.
So how do you move away from these units that would put them in windows? Any kind of air you move by somebody is an impact to the student. You have to be able to pick it away from the students, like an air handler's new roof and stuff. You can't let it just roll by somebody. So again, we'll get better as we get going, hopefully more information tomorrow.
The other thing is we'll work them with the Valley Brezinger, Lance Whitehead, through which title grant?
Title four.
Title four. They're providing facilities consultant suggestions down to, you know, if you reopen, this is the direction people need to move in the hallways, this is how, you know, how you need to set your restrooms up. These are our recommended numbers for classrooms, based on your square footage only. So Lance Whitehead has been working with us, he's got CAD drawings, and his firm is working to provide guidance to us from a facility standpoint.
With all due respect, you know, I'm shocked to hear five to six as the threshold for air exchanges in a healthcare facility where you do not have thirty, you want a room. The requirement is fifteen to twenty, and most hospitals and medical centers move twenty to twenty-five. So the idea that we're shooting for five to six brings a completely different picture on air quality, to my mind, very typically, especially when we think about how many people, even in a physically distanced situation, are gonna be in a particular room. And I would be really hesitant to shoot for anything lower than that. And if there's, if we're gonna tool up anyway, that brings to my mind a whole bunch of other questions about the air quality that we're hanging out with as a baseline, pre-poked, because five to six is shocking to me. That's a low bar.
And the only thing truly we've come to consensus with right now is lockers are probably out of play. We're not using lockers, so. Any questions on the facilities?
A thousand.
A thousand.
One thing we noticed today also is in each of the buildings, the extensive modifications that the bathroom is gonna need to meet the requirements. And then on top of that, you need at least one new hire to go around to them and service them. It's not a new hire at each one of those, because we're gonna take out at least a third of the lavatories, and it seems like at least a third to half of the sinks. So, you know, when classes are changing, you're gonna have a line that's gonna take fifteen minutes to clear. And it's just expensive to do all that plumbing modification.
This is the part of our program that worries me the most. I think it raises the issue of inequality in our school system in New Hampshire to a whole new level. We have talked for a while now, and even as going in part of the Emma's brief earlier this year, about the inequality that exists in our school districts because of our current funding formula. And when I read the recommendations that came through the state, I was really disappointed, because they say should, is recommended. It read like an unfunded mandate, and it places, for as much as we talk about local control, it's excellent that each district can tailor to the needs of their district based on the disease prevalence in their district. But that also absolves the state from any level of support for context places. And it doesn't surprise me at all, it won't surprise me, to hear that the end cost for this district could be a couple of million dollars easily. To tool up for two years of a pandemic, we hope that it's three years of a death month. When our municipalities in this district are already struggling, people are not paying their tax bills already. They felt like our CTE project, which had so much thought put into it, was too much to ask. And I think it's really important that we move forward with building plans, because you always have good plans. But I think to plan with the expectation that we're just gonna put people in the building is not enough planning. I think we need to think about, given the inequity that exists in our region and in our district in particular, is that even the right answer? You know, and with all the difficulties that are around that, I don't know how to ask our taxpayers in this district to pony up another two million dollars for what amounts to be temporary changes based on recommendations that the state won't stand behind financially. And the state's already not standing behind the funding formula with any level of responsibility. You know, that's really hard. I think you guys are in a really tough spot, and I appreciate the integrity of your domain group in digging into some of these really challenging questions and providing as much transparency to throw around as you want.
One thing with facilities in particular, and what Sheila had talked about earlier with our fund balance, having that one-time aid this past year approved to go into our building grounds trust, and we have a balance of about one point seven million dollars in that right now, makes me feel a little bit better. Not that I want to spend it all on this, but to some extent, you're not going to taxpayers and you're not asking for them. So eight hundred and some odd thousand.
But if it can't kick down the road, as far as I'm concerned, if it can't
I agree, but there's some little bit of comfort here.
For sure good to have a buffer, but.
I'm not sure that was a buffer. We said that we want to do moves there.
And I think, you know, at the end of the day, it's absolutely important to try to get back to an education high integrity. But I think we need to look at return on investment as we move forward with these plans. Because if we're asking our taxpayers to make this kind of investment for our kids to return to school, we need to be confident that our kids are going to return to school and receive a high-quality education with rigor. And with all of the other aspects that go into this, including the social and emotional impact of living in a pandemic, and the economic collapse that's happening around us, and asking our teachers to come into our spaces and be the police of masks and hand hygiene and physical distancing, and then also deliver an education. I'm hoping that as part of the planning process, we see some cool innovation coming. Sparta is known for its innovation, and I would just ask that known for its innovation. And I would just ask that as plans are built, they're not so focused on an end game that is bucking seats and instead focused on an end game that is physically responsible and safe and delivers high quality education. And that might not look like plexiglass on table. It might look like something.
Thank you. So health is Mike and Chuck.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for having us. So me and Mr. Curtis ran the health community. So it consists of the two of us, the school nurses, and various first responders, medical professionals, and parents from our district. And we've met a couple of times now, hit a couple of recommendations we're going to talk about. Most of them were driven by recommendations from the CDC and Dr. Chen. Our school nurses have, in particular, been working, sitting in and listening to a lot of information put out by Dr. Chen. They've really been kind of driving a lot of this conversation. So the big recommendations that you guys should know about. First one is whenever anybody comes into the building, they're going to get screened, kind of like we all went through right here. If a kid fails that screen, they are going to be sent home. And they are going to not be allowed to come back to school for either they have a negative COVID test or 10 days of past without. We're also going to recommend that anytime you are moving about the building, you're in a mask. Social distancing, the recommendation, you're three to six feet. If it's six feet, we feel basically the recommendation that it's, the kids could take the mask. So if it's under the six feet, they really should stay with the mask. Also, when they're sitting, they should all be facing in the same direction. And whenever possible, they should be moving in cohorts of groups together so that kids aren't exchanging meaningful large amounts of school. We have some other recommendations around like the nurses' room and ways to set those up so that we can make sure that we have like a space to deal with COVID and COVID-related things. And then another space where the nurses can do what they've always done. So one of the things the nurses are really pushing for is some extra help, more nurses on staff in order to have somebody who can really take care of the COVID, especially, you know, when you get into the winter months. Because the recommendations from the state are if somebody has a symptom, we are to treat it like it's COVID until we know that. So we all know, come about November, 50% of the kids in the school are going to be running around, running doses, or coughs, or even just the normal flu. And we need to have a place where those kids can be isolated and sent home and not exposed to the kid who wants to come in because they fell off a monkey virus or that's. You know, some of the expenses that I've been looking at, I don't have the numbers like those guys did, but, you know, before acquiring masks, we're going to have to provide some of those. You know, if we're adding additional people to the nurses, that is, you know, an additional expense there. And then the three to six feet, you know, I got to reiterate what the facilities department said. Just looking at my building in Lancaster, it will be tight to get all those kids.
So just again, as a committee, the positive out of our health committee is the investment is very high with our group. So we have about 10. And as Chuck said, they're parents, they're nurses, they're EMTs, doctors, you know, social, mental, emotional experts. So to get it from the experts and to get it to you, I think that's a really good step, which for, you know, letting us do the groundwork for you and then giving you that information, I think is a really good way of doing it. We have like that first draft. So we met, kind of got our list of, hey, what are these, what are these procedures that really, you know, what are the black and white to get, to get the safety of parents, community members, staff, and students here or however it looks. So Chuck and I are going to get this back to them. We've kind of, we created the first draft. They're going to look at it. We're going to meet again Friday, finalize really what we're calling procedure, like a procedure example, procedure for social distancing, procedure for student instruction, procedure for wearing masks, procedure around cleaning and handling materials. So just those procedures. And to get the medical experts to give us their, their take. And then they're giving us recommendations and suggestions. So we kind of have those three categories. Just to piggyback on nurses' concerns, that isolation room is a must. Staffing concerns? So here's, I'm going to give you three things that are going to, when I hear it as an educator and a parent, and I'm like, oh my God, this is education, you know, the year 2020. So how are nurses going to handle like their regular day and then do that second, we're calling like the primary check, which has to happen at home. So the parents need to take the first check. Then they're going to come to the school and take the secondary check. We're like, well, can we get them in the classrooms and the nurse can go, go around to the classes and do that secondary check? No, it's got to happen outside the building. Okay, so we got, the nurses, we're going to have a tent set up? No, because if it might have a rainy morning or this kind of weather. So how are you going to get, how are you going to do that? So staffing concerns was one of it. You know, hey, there's only one of them. Nurses need to wear PPE whenever they're interacting. So that's going to be expense. That's going to look different. The, you know, little kids with the nurse walking around like, you know.
Scary.
Not like the, you know, nice nurse we typically know. Those, those things. Dealing with the students who have poor hygiene, they talked about handling medications, but these added responsibilities. We've got students and staff that are diabetic or other medical issues. So just those layers upon just the normal stress of before, before we kind of run into this. For me, the second aha was any student or staff member exhibits symptoms should be sent home for 10 days until, until that 10 days is up and they feel good, or they go to their doctor and get a, get a negative COVID test, then that's it. So think about that, you know. The student is sick like a normal year. Now, once they're sick, they're, we're treating like they're COVID positive, and that's a 10-day. So now that's not good for anybody because they probably can't have COVID, may not have COVID. And then how?